There's a police reform meeting, so he may be coming in and out, from what I understand. Alright, so I think we are all here.
No, it hasn't started streaming.
Oh, sorry Sam, I thought you said it was.
Yeah, I started it, but I'm texting the desk to let her know it hasn't connected.
Alright, we'll wait. Thank you.
Thanks.
We're on, and it's live.
Okay, thank you. So, for those that are on late, the reason we're starting a little bit late is to make sure that this is being shown live on the YouTube, so that everybody can participate. We're all here, with the exception of Ms. Patrick. She will be arriving shortly. She's at a work engagement, and will be here soon. Alright, so what I thought we would do is, I'm assuming people have changes that they would like to make to the budget, and I thought I'd just start by going around, asking everybody what their suggestions are, and then we can discuss those changes once they're all on. First, I'd start with the Finance Committee, then go to the rest of the Council. So, Ms. Luuski, why don't you start us off?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palamini. On page 26, 3310-1112, there's a $69,000 error, and I believe it's overtime. I think if we correct it, we'll have $69,000 more. Also, there are some changes needed with, you know, my recommendation would be to eliminate stipends. Line item A1310-136, it's on page 3. A1620-136, which is page 14. A1621-136, which is page 16. A1622-136, which is page 17. A5010136, which is page 37. And A8664-36, which is page 52. Each one of those is $3,000, and it totals up to $18,000. So, those are the recommended changes that I would like to see instituted.
Mr. Palamini, Anthony, what was the first change that Karen suggested? I did not pick that one.
I'm gonna try to put this all on a document and share the screen, if you can. Are you seeing the screen, the Word document?
It's page 26, Mr. Kozier, line 12.
Excuse me, Mr. Palamini?
Yep.
What happened there is overtime, it got over... So, that number is supposed to be 6,000 at 112, but the 75,000 and 25,000 are supposed to move down, one in a block. So, the 75,000 is really for unused sick leave, and the 25,000 was for unused vacation for the three employees who are going to retire out of that program sometime this year. So, it's not that overtime has to be added, 6,000. So, that 69,000 is not correct. I just wanted to let you know what John Klutcher had mentioned when he was on.
Okay, I'll highlight that, but let's just, buddy's suggestions first. Now, is that doctor? Is everybody able to see the screen?
Yes, John, that's first. Perhaps it's the first change is not right then. Okay, I got it. Thank you. Thanks, Anthony.
Just want to make sure. I'm gonna try to put everything out here, so we can follow along with everybody. Alright, Mr. Mutiveren?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Palamini. Before I go into my few suggested changes, I would just like to make a statement. Over the last several days, we had, you know, public hearings on this budget, and these hearings were open, so the public moved online via WebEx and OSM streaming. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our department head, the staff. Each department head were able to provide us with details on revenue and expenditure, and answer many of our questions. We also heard from many of them the impact these proposed cuts early on would have on these departments. The reduction in services, the long time, the long waiting time to get services, and data collection, and many more issues. Our taxpayer and residents will be affected if these cuts are put into place. As a council, we need to find ways to avoid this disruption of services. The state and federal agencies are going to provide funding. These fundings will help to maintain the staffing and services as needed. As such, I am proposing the following changes to the 2021 budget. Under revenue, I am proposing that we increase the sales and use tax by $370,000. Under revenue, again, under discretionary state aid, we have that as zero. I am asking that we put that at $1,211,352, with a total increase of revenue of $1,581,352.
Can you say that last time again?
The sales tax, I have been adding, increased to $370,000.
No, I got that one. It's $1,200.
The discretionary state aid, $1,211,352, for a total increase in revenue of $1,581,352. Under capital spending, I am asking that we add the speed signs, $113,000. And we also add $20,000 for speed humps, for a total of $133,000. I am also proposing that we the fill vacancy that is being proposed to cut, I am asking that we add that back for a total of $1,552,400. That is 877,541 per salary, and 474,869 for all benefits. Under A1410-100 clerical aid, I'm asking that we add back that position, that's a vacancy, under the city clerk's office, salary of $32,530, plus benefits of $23,422. I am also asking that we add on the A7310-419B, the summer youth program, that we add back $40,000. With the capital spending and the proposed add back to the vacancies, sorry, the fill, the clerical aid and summer program, that will give us a total of $1,581,352, the capital spending, and the proposed staffing and the youth summer program, and that will zero to sell back with a revenue of 1.581,352, with the expense of 1.581,352. I would also, under facility and building, I am proposing that we keep the janitor position as is, and don't move them to the cleaning position for another year. That is all my change at this point in time, Mr. Palamini.
I guess I'm not muted. Just a second, just trying to keep up.
Alright, if you need anything, let me know, and I will go over that.
No, just check the screen and make sure I got everything properly.
Yeah, keep the, I'm asking that we keep the janitor position, and not moving them to the cleaners position for another year.
Alright, I think I have everything there, correct?
Excuse me, Mr. Mutiveren, when you say all vacancies?
Mr., let's just get through all the changes first.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep up, that's all.
Um, Mr. Kozier?
Well, hold on, John. You didn't put any dollar amounts after the vacant position and clerical aids? You want to add those in, John, or?
Yes, it's $1,300.
Oh, sorry, I can go over that back, for the $1,352,400.
Right.
And the clerical aid is $5,595,200.
There, I think that's...
That looks like it. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna pass, Mr., I know you just called to me, I'm gonna pass it over to Ms. Porterfield, or whoever you're going next, but I will pass it this time, and keep my time for fair future here.
You act like we're the Senate, where we all have 10 minutes. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. So, well, first of all, I wanted to thank all the staff, and the mayor, and the Commissioner of Finance, and everyone for working on this budget. This is like the toughest year we've seen, certainly in my history of being on the Council. And I also want to thank the public for coming in, you know, sending in their comments, and also for contacting for other City Council members, but I can speak for myself, can speak for myself concerning some of the things they had. So, I think some of the things that I wanted to see, or have already been spoken about, so I just want to, one of my, I only have a couple, actually. And one of the ones was that for the tax, excuse me, the garbage collection increase, that was one of the things that I received a lot of feedback on from our citizens, you know, and so, in looking at it, we have about 15,817 units within the city right now. So, I'm proposing that we cut the fee that would have been $50 per unit, down to $25 per unit. And so, that would be $395,000 for $125. And with cutting that in half, this is the second part of my suggestion, and with those savings that we would realize there, I would propose that we apply that, some of that, if not all of that, towards for a tax reduction of the proposed 2.82%. You know, we, our citizens are struggling as it is, and we were talking about, in some cases, reducing positions which would reduce services, and we're already strapped to the limit. And so, I don't see us cutting positions, first and foremost, but also, I think that we should, for the benefit of our residents, try to give them some relief in these difficult times for everyone, people out of work. I don't need to go through all of it for you, so I'm proposing that...
Just so I get this correct?
Yes.
So, you're proposing, I just want to make sure I got it right, so I can put it correctly. You're cutting the fee for garbage from 50 to 25.
Right, and that number should be 395,425.
Oh, correct, sorry.
That's okay. I was talking fast and a lot.
And, Tom, you're saying to use what for a tax cut?
So, originally, was the proposed garbage fee would have been $798,850. So, by reducing it in half, the other 39, 395,425, I'm suggesting that we apply towards reducing the proposed tax increase.
So, you can't use that for a tax cut, as much as I would like to.
Say that again?
I said that's money that would not be collected, and it's not actual money we have, so we wouldn't be able to use that to reduce the tax increase.
Okay, so, if, but wasn't there some talk about increasing the revenue as well? But we'll go over it when we get to that, but then that's my proposal, but I would also like to see a tax reduction.
Okay.
A reduction in the proposed tax increase, I should say.
Okay. Ms. Perazzo?
Yes, given that the past state discretionary aid has been more than $2 million, I would find that revenue in that line, then take the loss of the revenue, or, excuse me, the loss of the revenue of the garbage fee, and use that for the tax reduction. So, my changes mirror Ms. Mutiveren's, with the exception of increasing that discretionary state aid line, because, let's be honest, we know, we know we're going to get money. So, even being, you know, very prudent with the amount, $1.5 million would certainly be a reasonable expectation. And then use that additional amount to decrease taxes. Over the rest of the changes put forward by Mr. Mutiveren and Ms. Porterfield, I agree with it. Then I assume we're going to talk about things that we disagree with in upcoming comment periods, or shall I say that now?
Well, let's just get everybody's changes, and we'll go through what everybody agrees, disagrees with.
Okay.
Did I get your sentiment correct?
As increases discretionary state aid include the half of the revenue from the garbage collection fee to reduce taxes.
Okay, so, state aid to $1,500,000, reduce taxes, and then use the garbage fee to I'll just put general, reduce tax increase. Alright, I think Ms. Patrick has joined us now.
Yes, I have, and I apologize for being late. I too want to start out by thanking the staff for their work on this budget, and for their understanding around the budget that we, the budget cuts that we face this year, given everything that's been happening. I have just a few suggestions. I also want to thank everybody for their patience with me, as I had to ask certain questions, because it was my first time through. I wanted to suggest just a couple of things. In terms of the speed signs for the school zones, $113,000, which Mr. Mutiveren also mentioned, I agree that these are really, really important pieces that we will need, at least for part of the year, given the fact that the schools are closed currently, and probably will be for first half of the year. But my suggestion instead would be that we approach a private foundation. The Schenectady Foundation, or the Reich Family Foundation, the Carl Lilian Foundation would be a perfect one, or the Broughton Foundation, to try to fund those signs for $113,000, and I think we might have some good luck there. For the youth, summer youth program, which I care deeply about, again, I think that we should be thinking about using CDBG money for the funding of that $40,000 for the summer employment program. In terms of the crossing guards, which are in the budget, and I didn't write down the line numbers, I'm sorry. But for the crossing guards, I recommend that we work with the school district. I understand that we've already started those discussions. I believe someone mentioned that when they were presenting this line. But I think that it would be a perfect opportunity to involve seniors in high school. They all have a mandatory community service requirement. And so, I think it would be a perfect way to train some seniors, and get them involved in fulfilling their community service their community service requirement, by seeing if we could substitute them as our crossing guards. Or alternatively, looking to the PTA in the school district, to see if any volunteers, as from parents from the various schools, would volunteer to be the crossing guards. And then finally, in terms of the city clerk's office, and the amount of administrative work that we discussed, I do want to make the recommendation that we close the office for one day per week, so that the staff can catch up on all of that administrative work that currently they're not able to do. And those are the only suggestions right now that I have. I'm sure more things will come up as we go on.
Thank you. Alright, I'm trying to make this, so you can still see it, but everything...
Just a suggestion, would you mind just putting individual name above the changes, so that way we know who the changes are coming from, and we can report back to them for clarification?
Sure. Oops.
Thank you.
Off the highlighting. Let's see.
Mr. Palamini, if I can, while you're doing all that, just make some comments?
Sure.
Alright, yeah, because I don't have any additional changes. And no disrespect to Ms. Carmel Patrick, but unfortunately, I disagree with every single one of your comments that you just made regarding our youth in the city here. Right now, the devastating cuts to our summer youth employment, our parks and recreation staffing, and once again, the youth totaled over $88,000 in losses for prospective jobs for our youth. And I urge my colleagues on this council to at least restore that $40,000 line item for summer youth employment. There is some money in there for CDBG, which goes mostly to the Boys and Girls Club, where they hire our lifeguards and such, but again, we're talking about these individuals who need these jobs, and really have to work during the summer hours. In respect to the speeding signs, once again, this has been on our radar for many, many years, Ms. Patrick, which unfortunately, you don't realize. And look at, I'm, really, we're tired of waiting. It's, this is an item that we truly need in our school zones. And I understand schools are not open, but you know what, they're gonna be opening soon. By tennis equipment is ordered, we're gonna have the cameras, we're gonna have the data in there. Hopefully, they're gonna be solar operated, but we cannot risk one child's life while we wait for a foundation or another agency to step up and say, yes, we're gonna support you, and then I gotta have that agency's name on that sign. These should be City of Schenectady signs, with all the data and information going directly to our City of Schenectady folks, and the PD as well. Regarding the crossing guards, and you know, I'm very proud that with these proposed changes, we're restoring all 16 and a half positions that were slated for layoffs. Every one of those individuals are providing important services to our city residents and neighbors, and that includes our crossing guards. To single those individuals out, as you know, those positions are very difficult to hire in the first place. They have, in years past, we have tried PTO people, seniors in high school, you can't do that, because again, you've got 12 different elementary schools to cover. So, again, these positions are very, very important to our youth, and to cut them out completely, I think is just something that we really cannot do. And I'm thinking maybe perhaps the clerk, Sam Izak, can maybe address, and I don't know how this works, closing the clerk's office. I believe that's probably against the state statute. I believe that office has to be open five days a week. She has, her office has been devastated in these past three, four years with cuts, with part-time positions being cut, and now this individual clerk's position being eliminated as well. She needs the staffing there to operate in that office, and the job that she does there is tremendous, and we really need to give her the support that is needed, and again, I truly do not believe we can close that office legally for one day to try to catch up on work, as so stated. And again, I just want to thank our colleagues for working on this, our department managers, everybody who was involved. You know, one thing we haven't talked about is the capital budget. If the mayor has noticed, nobody has made any mention about the smart cities dollars in that capital fund. I think we're, for the most part, supportive of that program, Mr. Mayor, so I hope you walk with confidence as we are supporting that program for you, and those funds. And of course, everything else that was listed in capital, I think are just important, and we need to move forward. Other than that, like I said, I agree with Mr. Mutiveren's changes, and support the others as well. Thank you.
Alright, is the mayor even on? Mayor, are you on?
I think you may have had to have gotten off the call for the task force call at 6 o'clock.
Okay, I wasn't sure. There's a call-in user 3, I thought maybe it was the mayor. So, I'm just trying to get everybody straightened away here. Alright, as far as my changes, they were already in there, were mentioned. I would prefer to try to lower the tax increase. You know, there are some positions, I think, can be joined together. For example, the bingo inspector, maybe the clerical aid position could be combined into one. That person, I think, already has experience in the clerk's office. That person, I think, already has experience in the clerk's office plus the uh bingo hall. Uh, from my understanding, uh, it's going before the um. Zoning board to be turned into a um storage facility anyway. So that would take out the majority of bingo within the city. So I would suggest combining those two positions into one if you so choose to put that back in. And um largely, I would have to disagree with a a lot of these things. I would, I think a um more solid approach, in my view, is. Let's get our, hopefully get state and federal funding and then come back with budget amendments. So that we're not in putting ourselves in a position where we could really be hurting ourselves with perhaps. Um, overestimating what we may be getting. Um, and that's a concern I have, but uh. I just leave it at that. Um, whoever would like to go, just ask.
Mr. Palamani?
Go ahead, Ms. Perazzo.
I find it very hard to believe that anyone on the council would recommend cutting those stipends. After no one on the council, with the exception of Ms. Porterfield, was willing to step up and look at the large. Um, raises given to the police chief and the assistant chief. These stipends were put in place and have been in place for many years for people who have to work in the middle of the night, in the dead of cold. And all of those things and to be supportive of an eleven, I think, eleven percent raise. And be unwilling to to change the legislation, to put it under the council's uh control. And yet rob these people of these stipends, I I I I I'm I'm shocked at. Uh, so um, the again, uh, i- as far as what Mr. Mutiveran put forth, I'm comfortable with. Um, I agree with Mr. Kozier about the crossing guards, um, as well as the summer youth pro- pro- program. I think uh what Mr. Mutiveran put forth is very sound and I consider it very low risk. We know we're going to get that money. Once those positions are cut from that budget, it is hardship to add them back in. And these, the we right now are in a temporary situation. The city is not in um fiscal decline, spiraling out of control because um of the lack of business base. Or, you know, um, houses being inhabited i- i- in on the tax rolls. This is a hiccup because of an odd situation that is going to end. And I think we need to keep our services in place for our residents. And we need to look at the fact that there is a way to move forward and not compromise these departments and all the hard work that they're doing. I know I personally heard from a number of uh department heads. Um, and I might add, some of them very emotional about how they were going to possibly do their job. With these exorbitant uh cuts in services, not to mention the fact of the impact that it's going to have on our residents. So um, other than, you know, the stipend issue, I I am supportive of uh the changes put forward in the revenue. Uh, capital budget and uh expenditures that we discussed.
Anyone else?
Yep, uh, Mr. Paulman, if I may please?
Go ahead.
Uh, and and again, uh, agreeing with Ms. Praza here, uh, with the discretionary uh state aid. Uh, in the past, we've had uh, you know, over two point three million dollars on the line items. Uh, and for the city to put in a zero, a zero number, uh, is again, uh, just, just not the right thing to do. Uh, and to lay off these sixteen and a half positions where we could have fully restored them uh with some sort of a number there. I think uh is just a disservice to our employees. Uh, and again, this one point uh two eleven, uh, well, what is it? One million two eleven three fifty-two. Um, in that temporary number, I think is is very, very um. Uh, a a good number to start out with as a starting point, again, to to save our positions for our individuals. And these are positions that are already filled uh for the most part by individuals who, believe it or not, every single one of these individuals, I'm sure reside. In the City of Schenectady as per the mayor's orders. So this is an important piece for us to uh protect these jobs. Uh, regarding the sales tax number, uh, the reason for that's a small increase there, that uptick of uh three hundred seventy thousand. I believe Mr. Multiveran sent everybody an email from the county um regarding the uh returns on the sales tax revenue. Uh, that have been up and um they told us that to uh increases by three hundred seventy thousand uh is actually a a very good number to do. Uh, of course, are my first question was why didn't the county do it? Well, because the county voted on their budget the night before. These numbers came out from New York State Sales Tax uh on Wednesday. The county voted in their budget on Tuesday night. So again, this uh increase of three hundred seventy thousand dollars, I think, is is a very true number um to use. And again, um, with Ms. Porterfield uh cutting that uh the garbage tax, um, the fee, uh, let's be honest, everybody, it is a tax. As everybody knows, uh, feesy, but it's, we're paying it. Um, I really will want to see uh the reduction of at least uh another additional one percent, which I think we can do. From what the mayor's proposed budget was, what, two point eight or whatever his number was? If we can compound another one percent, three hundred fifty thousand uh with these changes, um, I would certainly like to do that. And uh, again, regarding the stipends, um, uh, look at folks, the these folks, these administrators go over and above uh what their job duties are. Uh, as does the clerk and as does the corporation council, who those two do not get a stipend. Um, just FYI on that, uh, they're the only other department heads that are there on a regular basis. So we're going to argue that, then guess what? Add six more thousand, cover the other two. Um, and again, I guess the sign maintenance is sixty-nine thousand uh that Ms. ZW talked about. I guess that's really not truly a a good number, unfortunately. Um, so I guess that's kind of where we are. But again, the numbers that uh I think are presented here this evening from Mr. Multiveran, I I think are fairly solid, Mr. Palamani.
All right, so I will eliminate these. It appears there is consensus on these numbers, correct?
Well, I'm for, I'm.
That is correct, uh, Mr. Palamani. I do support the stipend also. I mean, our department head are going uh beyond uh beyond tall, uh, you know, duty weekends and in and out. And I think three thousand dollars stipend, um, it's it's it might look a lot, but in the form of the work that they're delivering for our city. I think these department head award every single dollar uh we can give them.
Ms. Perazzo, you're okay with this, as you said. Ms. Porterfield, do you have any objections?
Uh, so removing the stipends? Absolutely not. And Mr. Um Ferrari clarified. The the sign, um, the sixty-nine thousand dollar amount that was incorrect. Um, so are you asking also for input on anything else that was said or are you just talking about that particular piece at this moment?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so one of my concerns is with the the suggestion to to of closing the clerk's office for one day to the public. Um, you know, it's, it right now, it's already challenging for our public to come in first and foremost. And secondly, um, closing it one day just really means it's just another way of cutting services to our to our public by closing it down. So they now, there's one less day that they can come in. So that's just really another means of cutting service. So I think we definitely want to steer away from that. Um, and in terms of the crossing guard and people doing community service, uh, my concern with that would be what is the city's liability to have volunteers do that? Should there be an accident or something like that? That is, you know, that's what immediately came to mind um when that was being suggested. And in terms of the overall budget, there was one um department head who said that, you know, there's padding here and there. I don't think that this year there is, but I do uh believe that um with the email that Mr. Mutiveran said that the information that he got. Be received from the county in terms of the sales tax agreements. Puts us in a better position than we originally thought we were based on these sales tax agreement information that we previously gotten from Mr. Gardner. So I'm I'm supporting that and also that uh we should get some discretionary aid, um, not not the zero that's in the budget. Um, and obviously, I um support the speed humps and the uh and everything else here is as well. And um, I just want to also state how important I think it is to us to try to maintain the jobs for all of our staff people. We already working at a um very limited staff. We, okay, there is a sixty-three positions that were um. That were cut, but forty-seven of those were already unfilled. So it's, you know, so we already were understaffed in that way. So to cut now to additional additional sixteen positions, I just think puts us in a very, very bad place. And not a place that we should uh try to go um and still maintain all the services that we're providing to our community. While on top of that, um, in trying to wanting to increase the taxes and the um garbage collection fee. So I I don't support reducing any services in any way, and that includes um closing the clerk's office for one day.
Okay, well, I will just adjust that one thing. I think uh I agree, maybe not one day, but probably could cut the hours, a couple hours each day. So the staff can get caught up on their work, but I understand, um, you know, that's it. I believe with the exception, once we delete this, there are at least four votes. So I'll call for a motion to pass the approved amendment or the uh amended budget.
I guess I'll move it.
Mr. Mutiveran?
I think you blocked him on purpose, John.
I haven't touched it. Uh, let me see if I can even find him.
He's there, he's there and he doesn't.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
I just want, I just want a clarification before we move. So are we moving an amended version with the recommended change from myself, Ms. Porterfield? And the others, or what are we moving tonight?
Yeah. Yes.
He's got it listed there, John.
Oh, oh, so so we're moving to increase the revenue by three seventy plus one point two eleven. Mr. Razzo asked for it to be one point five. Because you mentioned that we can't use the waste collection increase that was proposed by fifty dollars per unit. And Ms. Porterfield is asking that we cut to twenty-five dollars.
I'm just saying you can't use money you don't have to to put towards a tax cut. That's all. I'm not objecting or in inserting anything other than uh you can't use money you don't have for a tax decrease.
Okay.
So so Mr. Palamani, should we be increasing the revenue uh to one for the state aid from to one point five million then?
Uh, yeah, I meant to change that.
Yeah, and that's what I was, that was clarification. So instead of that, I I would, I would be okay to override that number that I present.
Yeah, he had that under Lisa's name, John. He had that under Lisa's name, John.
Yeah, I just didn't didn't change this.
Mr. Palamani?
Yes.
I assume we'll get an updated budget to review and make sure everything's in place before Monday.
I will send these changes to everybody, send it to Mr. Ferrari. And I'm like you, will assume he will send all the changes to everybody.
Uh, Mr. Palamani?
Yes.
Hey, uh, um, to to Mr. Ferrari, don't you have your little calculator there and all your stuff there? Can't you tell us right now what we got? You can, I'm sure you can tell us what our tax rate is going to be, right? I mean, you've done it in the past, John.
How much you reduce?
I don't do that. That's Anthony.
Okay, that's I meant Anthony, but I'm talking, hey, um, yeah, his lips were moving, nothing was happening.
Yeah, I I'm not sure how how we're reducing the 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 tax, the tax levy. How is that being reduced?
They're letting back in one point five million dollars in discretionary state aid and three hundred seventy thousand dollars in sales tax revenue.
Yeah, but then doesn't that all add up to be uh the five?
That should be about two, if my math in my head is correct. It should be about two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars more revenue than spending.
Right, that's that's why I want to make sure. Uh, but are we also including uh the reduction of uh the garbage to but fifty to twenty-five?
Fifty to twenty-five.
Okay, so that's that's which pointed to. Because uh going from fifty to twenty-five, that's about a five hundred thousand dollar uh difference.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Ferrari, what was your original number on the garbage fee?
It was uh. Into the original. At fifty dollars, uh, the non-exempt, the non-exempt portion, five million.
I'm sorry, but I'm missing like a a third of what you're saying.
Because. Marion, because it's um, it's feedback.
Yeah, uh, the non-exempt portion, raising it from two twenty-four to fifty dollars as originally. Uh, the non-exempt portion was five million, five oh eight, two, two, two. And then when you include the the raises into uh the exempt parcels. Uh, the total amount came to five million, seven fifty-six, one ninety-two, which I believe is in the budget. Now, if you do, uh, if you uh reduce that to uh. Uh, twenty-five dollars to twenty-five, that'd be uh two forty-nine. Uh, the reduction of non-exempt would be five million, fifty-one thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars, which is a reduction of uh.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yeah.
We were only talking about reducing the increase, not reducing the garbage fee to twenty-five dollars. So the increase was proposed at fifty dollars?
Yeah, go, you want to go from a two seventy-seven to two forty-nine, right?
Yes.
So the total, the total for non-exempt would go from uh five million, five hundred, eight thousand, two twenty-two to uh. Five oh, five, one, two, fourteen. That's four hundred fifty-seven thousand, zero, zero, eight. That uh difference is four hundred fifty thousand, zero, zero, eight.
Mr. Multiveran, what are your numbers there? What did you come up with, John? Your parcels and stuff, can you chime in there, James?
No, I'm actually taking notes, sorry. Uh, I I was listening to Ms. Porterfield. So 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 do we have, um, Ms. Porterfield has mentioned, uh, we have um fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen units. Is that correct?
That's, that is the correct number.
I I from uh, from the number you got from Molly today, uh, uh, that number of units was uh fourteen thousand, not non. Non-exempt was fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-one.
Can you, can you repeat for me, please? Fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand, let me, there's, just double checking my numbers here. Where'd it go? Fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-one.
Thank you, sir.
And uh, you got to, you got to remember, it goes uh a single family and but it's double for two families, triple for three families. And then you have the multiple residents at two forty-nine.
Okay, so if I may add, um, as well, we follow. So if we, if we were to, based on the proposal that Ms. Porterfield presented, twenty-five dollars per unit. On this, on this proposed increase, what would that dollar number be? Stand alone.
Yeah, can I, I can't. Are you talking to me, sir? I didn't understand.
Yeah, I was asking you, um, so if we were to take um the proposed, the amount of units that we have right now. And if we were to go, just assume that we're with uh twenty-five dollars per unit.
Yes.
How much revenue increase would that be for the city using the twenty-five dollars?
Okay, the the revenue, the total revenue is going to be five million, two hundred and twelve thousand, three twenty-six. That's with the exempt and non-exempt parcels.
So. Excuse, can I just, uh, Mr. Mr. Ferrari, can I just get clarification? You're saying that the five million is is the amount that was originally in the budget? Is that what you're saying?
No, originally, five million. Let uh, let me, let me uh, let me see, let me put these on the uh screen for you, let me just.
Just the mayor, I'll make you the uh presenter. I gotta find you.
Can, can I make a suggestion that might simplify this?
Yes.
Can we take um the proposed uh expenses that we're adding back in? So I'll write the salary in the fringe, the uh summer youth employment program, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And tally what amount of revenue and also the loss of the twenty-five dollars? That just the amount of the loss of twenty-five dollars and come up with a total of revenue that we have to offset with. and come up with a total of revenue that we have to offset with that, which? Because I think that'll make this much easier as far as a discussion point.
Mr. Ferrari, you should be able to put your stuff on the screen.
Okay, let me just go real quick here. Okay, this was, this is the, the original that's based on the budget. And the non-exempt, we raised the $50 from 224 to 50. But for, you have the, you have single homes, you have doubles, you have non-exempt, the total of non-exempt, 55 million, right? And then 55,500, and then you have the exempt rates, which gave us the total, which is in the budget. Now, the other rate, let me find that now. I gotta go share, right? I lost you, John. That's the fund balance analysis. Okay, this is from Molly today. And I'm going to change this to two, to change this to 249. This is what we have currently. I'm going to change this to 249. And that, and that's where I'm showing the difference between the 5 million at, with the $50 raise, this would be. And at the, this is the $50 at 5.5. And this is the $25. So it's 5,212. 5212326. So it's a 500, that's a $543,000 difference. So we take that 543866, and we're adding back, you said. John, I can't find you now. Let me see. How do I get back?
What are you trying to do?
John, keep sharing your changes.
Oh, well, then I gotta take the screen off. So I will, just a second.
So that, so like I'm saying, that budget difference by changing is 543,866.
Here you go, Mr. Ferrari.
Okay, then we want to increase. And we want to increase by 370,000, right? 1.5 million for revenues, right? So that's a, the revenues would increase by 1,326,134. So the speed signs and speed humps, that'll go into capital. The vacant positions with, I think, Mr. Multivaren, you said it was 1,1581352?
1352400.
1,352400.
So we're actually, without adding back the clerical aid and the youth program, we're $26,000 over, over the revenue.
Mr. Ferrari, can you add the clerical aid in the youth program and give us a total, please?
Yes, okay, 55952 and 40,000.
I suppose that we adjust the discretionary state aid.
I couldn't hear what you said, sorry.
I would recommend that we adjust the discretionary state aid by that amount.
What was the exact number, Anthony? Mr. Ferrari?
He's muted.
I unmuted him.
No, he's still, now he's good.
And I just want to let the council know that, you know, we got these numbers at the time we were doing the budget. We talked with OGS and OSC, a state controller. They're the ones who told us that that 20% was going to, you know, they, they told us, you know, that they think was very over into 2021. So that's why we put a zero. Things are getting better, and I'm glad you guys are willing to take that shot, you know? I appreciate it, to tell you the truth.
Mr. Palamani, if I may add to that. Just after Mr. Ferrari, I did have a conversation with a few of them. And they were comfortable telling me yesterday that we can put back 1.856 in that line. So we are 1.6 versus 1.856, we're still below. And that will give us a little bit of room, you know, in case, I'm not saying that we should have additional cuts, but we still have room there.
But they are, they are saying that we're adding less, right?
Yes, but they're saying that things are getting better, exactly what you mentioned there, yes.
Right, we had, we spoke about this, and I said to you.
Yeah, we did have a conversation about this yesterday. Both you and me, and I did call the budget office and find out information to make sure that whatever number I'm giving here is the more accurate numbers. And very conservative in the numbers, because I could have, I could have said, you know what, let's put 1.856, but I said, no, let's be a little bit more conservative in the numbers.
I thank you very much. Appreciate that.
No, no, anytime.
All right, these are the changes. Are there a motion to accept?
Yep, so move.
Second, second. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Hi.
Thank you.
John, can you send those to me? That way I can start tonight, by, and tomorrow I'll start working on giving you a whole new budget.
Mr. Palamani, are you there?
I think he left. No, he's still on there.
I was, I was muted, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Ferrari was asking if you.
I said I was going to send it to him, but I was muted, so.
All right, thank, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Have a good night.